Jawa ngan arme jinayleng kien parjona len lo chupong ninn. Chun chupong ninn ai bojut. Melo ngan oto laku Malawi jen lango wut wut. Iranin jen ore, chungu jimjon ran. Oto yung rongu chilu mawana re yung nyang chechungu lawagi chupong. Rokajitugan de beberin metang kujyamarrun chuta kama jalak chupong ninn.
Gluk chuyu mledo rollkolo ane djejelai lo chupong ninn.
President David Kadwa.
Good morning ngan kumu ujalep.
Aye, Mr. Speaker.
Minister Christopher J. Loyak.
Jawa ngan aalep armi jin majal, nedi jeline. P'ay, Mr. Speaker, aye.
Minister Ulbur Ainie.
Jawa ot komimen, aye, Mr. Speaker.
Minister Francis Aneswase. Minister Jagadine. Minister Kezay Chino.
Aye, Speaker, morning.
Minister Kudlang Kadwa. Minister Otak Kusino.
Jawa alep, aye, Speaker.
Minister Chopejang.
Jawa kaudue jen caraman ngan alep, aye, Speaker.
Minister John Emself.
Morning Speaker, kijiravi.
Minister Chiba Kadwa. Vice Speaker Peterson Chibat.
Morning, aye.
Senator Alfred Alfred Junior. Senator David Paul.
Morning, irojilo chupong ninn, na, aye, Mr. Speaker, good morning.
Senator Kastan Nomra.
Speaker, aye, kap ya alep.
Senator Thanot Kapelle. Senator Wisely Chagrayat.
Aye, Speaker, jawa ngan aalep.
Senator Sandy Alfred. Senator Thomas Ainie. Senator Tony Muller.
Jawa alep, Speaker, aye.
Senator Cheymin Najon.
Komololani jen uchupong ninn rainin majembarunku vaaduk, jen Mrs. Speaker. Jawa alep, am, aye.
Senator Ilthasi Ainie.
Aye, Speaker, jawa ngan alep.
Senator Michael Kadwa. Senator Tony Aiyaya. Senator Stephen Phillips. Senator Bruce Billiman. Senator Dennis Momataro.
Jawa jaraman ngan alep, aye, Speaker.
Senator Mike Alphery.
Jawa ek Speaker, jawa ngan alep, jawa ngan arme jinan.
Senator Kalani Kanego. Senator Manet Alfred. Senator Adabir Gelen.
Jawa yung chupong ngan alep, aye, Speaker.
Senator Iroji Yamomura. Speaker, perry.
Gluk alingar rollkolo, Minister Wajia wenyang ndel ngoduk. Emreng rojek excuse ylo kuva Chairman Senator Kalani Kanego. Brayne rojek excuse ylo chupong ninn rainin, nekaranang kachitukua to kayangan ipero. Minister Jagadine. Senator Chairman Alfred. Senator Kapelle. Senator Sandy Alfred. Senator Michael Kadwa. Senator Stephen Phillips. Emrumutogoda Senator Bruce Billiman.
Mr. Speaker, iorongol present, chijino absentum chimjon excuse.
Me yinu muwana djejeline ngan anu malawatuk, kamanikue lake ngan lo chupong ninn rainin. Lo ranin chujeyin. Chungu jimjon ran, roto yung rongu chilu. Ran ra liddak, inan djejeline ngan arme jen chijet. Kamu lala gunchun, ran aman ilane chiro wut. Malawi, lal, lo chupong ninn. Jene wala latau lai doma jen tanay. Jeveri yola i doma bachi lu. Kuipen jen ala calec chabro wut, aye doma numpai men. Nan jen prayden kap ministero. Emo da yala langan prayden. Nyan kile rugagin jemero ya kuvaaduk, rugagin moya. Inan kuvaaduk ala jen chaplaneo arwuch. Ndejegar program chiridugong, aye bojak jen Olympic amidiyo. Chagran kamur ilan pelochim porilo chupong ninn, kamur rugagilan per. Caraman ngan yuk, nede jelaganan kile yu lo, chupong ninn rainin. Aye doma numpai men yu. Nyan jen prayden kap cabinet. Ministero. Chibarkamur lalang jemporin uchupong ninn rainin praydena arwuch. Alal chiriduginar. Isakcelonchi Prayden David Kadwa. Ngayor caboro jen yu lo, chupong ninn, Mr. Prayden, nyan djejeline. Jene monanong caboro. Gluk par kali karang nyane lo, Senator Tomo Zaini kap Senator Alfred Alfred Junior. Nyan re ot kanaro. Mr. Prayden, chuyu mre malawatuk.
Komol, Mrs. Speaker. Muda jena uan maallem. Keku chirika nan chupong rainin ikanan, oraino barkuwa wajemkame lok nalen. Good morning ngan alep, albe miwuch. Leloya bar kile em kaudi. Ro, Vice Speaker. Chia kenamiro, olben ruge la porin nan. Armisin majal lo jemporin em rorej dugot, rore peludam i porinot. Oba irojem le rojeroh alep, ro, armi rore wier. Lo pelaga nayleng kien. Chun kile jen olongan ruginar. Kuvaaduk chupong rainin per jan rugi timoya. Mr. Speaker. Chilu ga baktal malawian, iki jen gar statemento ya kemoni ilugar ranin kudalkan idijela. Yewi ikanan moda. Uwaga chun gar kachitugar duglar. Iyonomi ya kemon. Kwe la warang gen cerbalka caboro, har cerbalka. Chun kachitugan gar Senator Rinchun areng jen ailing alep. Senator Alfred Junior. Iki jen rajarbal rolo yentye, em pulen arrum togayar palak karchun nan nan lugar. Kar dug melalangan ngagarwi kenogu, echalak rajarbalin entier en magutjen cerbalki nair. Yewi nanu ya rumiinku yu kenagar. Entidigenu. Iki jen entie kap digital RMI. Kenagar. Karan po dogar, renayak cerbalk perron. Em lalay, men guro man, jen olben kulkuinem kachion kamap. Gen chun solutione men ajem manangan armisin majal. Ili dagun ar, em djabut chuelok rajarbal. Weyzo ya ar pain, Mrs. Speaker. Em melalagar dugan ngayin yu echalak rajarbal, en entier en magutjen cerbalki nair. Njen chun kutnu yu nata garba. No yatan kenar majun agak malawian gen agar statemento ya ar kalwi. Em ikamu lal, Senator Rinchindireng jen aur, ilan gar kalukwe. Heleng solutione me mulwe. Telin areng. Iper lodjet abangkomi. Icep cabineto deme adminiswayini en marong kemoni. Ak kijangin lo ni dijela, jen ayaguja lo darba. Edo arengwa kijangin cerbalki perron, mchibangron. Congress ayen majalin. Armija ra luitkijin ayjin, nyan kile yu kijana cerbalki perron. Ali abangkien nan majal. Em. Chichu ko, en nan ya arkualwi lo statemento, ken abangkien wujmen rewalo, ken minajbok ken nan uchirikken. Pulen gen. Ane magut arme jen ayling kien. Em eworwuni nan magut arme jen, men arba echalo areng, arbon rebijan armisin magutukwe. Chimwey warin, ilwar, narong chimbaralak ujor gen ana dalaganin. Ag. Yali karwe or, abangilo majalin pa armijarin ar jamut. Em kijangay yu pulen. Spend more time. Em edali momekin tagainme irikomana armisin magutjen majalin. Em. Ekayar kiyo ngopa, re chimbaralak jangan iligun gen, dukoda esmuur, gorom manlok, chuguntakata gorom manlok. Chalalau jen gorom manlongan ajurunajir. Ag. Ag Speaker. Olben yu yu malok, em pulen kacimmarong pulen najet. Lalengen marong dujom report jen PSS. Epa yu gi jen rujurang nijirang. Merhar dujelokun tigri, jen jugul gor laplok, merhar lem jugul. Jen yu man tangan rainin, wujemmarong chela. Ajurireng redperjargiu. Wujajurungke eleng rar dugun rol dug, inkapjukwak cerbalku majalin ak kenan echalak cerbalku available. Iperan barrik salarikan arejobor ngan yur, rar magut ngan jaga iligun majal. Em. Chunin abang, bu kijangay bakt, iljum jaga lajwan ayling kien eda ajurireng, caborireng populaw. Kijangban perjin inriyo, ayur naranatun talayleng kien. Em chay wuyin. Pikutchun amu no chaban luzir. Puy. Natalam chun lak cap kilbulip, echalak. Elala ayling kien, bu kijang na. Bu yu alelok, eleng ya areng redpel do nangan wic. Em chaban perjin inatawa. Ag ayur naranatun ali ayling kien, em arme jen ayling kien. Jene ayuyin pulen cerbalki perron kalo lalawian areng edali perron tagain jen marong chibangron kemoni. Wila lali ala bayareng spend time, diela kijangat idogu kijang ragamankien. Ala bayareng dom spend timeume kajuderaon. Ken nan gen men gen chedemi redcepil kun chelut, abangkien me arrejelut arme. Em. En lalok chirigen areng. Ken ono gen abangkienem pikutcep solution ko. P'ay mul, anu an Senatorin chinjeren aurwe. Heleng abang, e ak echalak solution, kijang nangan kijaregi pa armijron rongom chela. Em cabineto dem adminiswayini roban mekemari mari mining. Chay wuyin chibangkuan alep areng, anu we. Kangrejahan majalin, kijangin. Em chyangay yuin cerbalki perron, kabloki en areng edali abangkienme rjelut arme. Bu yu garen pain, en kamur lal gen karmalawianin angar Senator Rinchindireng kalukwe. Yu mulwey bo la abangem jar kalwiak iri solution kien. Em chidugin men ijuwachemeng marong brainstormip perron areng kue la wuyin. Em kari lo areng den tarinagiron. Gen areng pain inriyo menriyoak. En varlavi en areng edali ceren kienme rjelut arme. Jawa ijogar karan pain, Mrs. Speaker, komol.
Komol Dada, Mr. Prayden. Em lalawo lo chupong ninn. Jana yu gi kene, Minister Inezister, Minister Loyak, aminin.
Inga, komol, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker. Komol Dada, ikanan. Kalak kile em kamur lal hari rojegan, abar marong kuvalakupel wuyilu chupong ninn rainin ngan kue la kien. Ran kaudit Praydene kap kue, Mr. Speaker, Vice Speaker. Memberin an cabinet kap Senatorin kachudu jen ayling kienar. Em arme jen majal, klan kile rugagin ar kuvalakupel uchupong ninn. Chun yandragiro aralep, tu jen guliga. Cherbalki per, Praydena an charan ra rigron, baligun e chani. Ram bagay iduglo, kire waran an. Idogun. Ledok plushingan cerbalki nara. Rainin iki jen Olympic aitana. Mr. Speaker, or chirika, enot abangilo ahudan kunono kuya. Ena chun member in cabinet. Ag. Esu raino chun. Armijira prusiane ayling alep. Armijin ayling alep, yu rojuro yu. Iki jen cerbalki nme. Ah. Aru yungan ayling kien kachudu. Menu kanan kunono agu yu, idog chun report ngan ngajan me rewana ayling alep. Ranu inneke. Ngarata ngay ayling alep, ilo report ngan cheping rekalo ke revenue ne. And majalin jen cerbalkan an cheping iki jen freight kap pa jinchya. Nembongol pacen itogu jen ayling alep. Nembongol pacen revenue kana jen ayling alep, indri in reporto. Men e rubere we, kumnajum kajmuyak. Chunin men emman ilaro ngajake. Alange ayling alep, contribute ngan ayling kienilo. Weywini kien. B'chay wic money ngan subsedaiji. Raavdakanachedeme redcepilukun par kajur, emet tolak jen santerin. Jen chikin cerbaji, ngachirbaji. Ayu amu inri nara, ayu wuyin kapalaki pulen cerbalki nara we, truntabaralep arme. Menu yu kanan par reporti, iki jen reporti nan meyriin. Ayu kala kaya ngan, b'chan bongjen beborin yu alep. Emi twyo yu kien kayurin ayin ngan weywini kien. Jedyen kompani garatalim rotaujen an chun kompani back. Nyan v'jak jambal, ay lo wajaya no chilu or chilu kompani alep jen. Em alap kompani kien, ralap, jedyen marong kabul chun thima. Jedyen wajawadipoun ak hidawayan, ak por ngajederacep. Ange edalodjan waja, jwun chimatan pukunijan, yan pukun kajedera kabul. Emay indri, par bllo pukun kajedera warje tolo kajur. Em air. Menu yu, waini kan redparpe, derbaki kien maralep. Kompani kan ra wui, ngan air wut, waini kan ngan chen ngan air pukmoip ngan arme jalan. Alep amu wini kien. Ag menu yu, na solution wini, problem wini, kala kaj solutiono, chingelawwa, iloy yonom. Weywar den ilon, talangar ayin ngan bul. Akar ceren, em rol dugun ruge wijma back. Jen cabineto we, aban cerbalka we, wui nyo yu yu ceren. Wey. Enin kiu. Plen agar lap waini kan, aykan yu kan, chunin men pukun yala rak. Lu draina per jen yu, echalak wainan cerbalki anglet, herol dugun chen kantubuleri. Kap ruge wijma backen waini. Komol, Speaker.
Komol, Dada Minister. Gluk kali karangan parre ot kanaro ilo. Lalogun kalukke Chairman Senator Iroji Yamomura, ar kajitugan excuse ylo rainin. Nre ot kanaro. Komol, Dada Minister, nana yu gi kile Minister Ulbur Ainie, epolai donarongan. Pokuna wulu chupong ninn malawatuk.
Komol, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, moda jen al, bu chirikuna ilo chupong ninn rainin. Yunan kolagar. Kamur lal em kaudi jemero ilang gen. Karagamona kewan ngan kijujkajuyukap. Chun ayling chirik kienar. Paranot kolagar, nanin kaudu yungan kue Speaker, ubijanam, paranot Vice Speaker. Praydeninar, paranot rainuwan cabinetinan. Rainuwan nidi jala, irojem le rojeroh. Ari ayling kien. Rugagiro jemero ilo ilagili yago, paranot chun ejenolongan rugagitim, nan kuvaadukipel ngalo chupong ninn rainin. Kamanijcerbalki nchara yu gyidongani. Aye, alep armijin majal. Mr. Speaker. Yunan kunono chiriguodan statementan prayden kia. Emay ganan kolagay sapode, olben melalawa niki jen. Air kapuk.
...
Eh, bijalaga rayini, nijar kalablo, onen wayini. Ayir ngut yar. Eh, nijar ruilojan majelini, chepkaneke. Chapero da, kaneke no prakanan, minan pridjenba. Pugut kelen kalablo, chalalajana, yurulini yirmagi kap. Kap, gichi, chigun taga. Eh, no raanela jion. Sena ruilu yama murar, kene lu gun. Eh, waywin goanat, pugut kelen ke. Armayurulini, lu gun matar mehre, amerikan, ruch chelu. Ben dialasis misinu. Ran marungun tok, ne chaywijin kale dialasis san taruujin, in pelin ran yar rol. Ken ran yar roller, bo do pamali kan ay. Eh, unan var chibian, armayjigin tridjakan, ken. Ayar perit engineerin, jemeerin, pugut kelen varen marungun. Ayar olak, chetan agin ayar muri, ilo lalim. Yilawin, ngi chep dialasis misin kan, epon to ayar sesi. Mili guvin chaywijin kalmanglo, jenka. Ngan kangel tok armayjin majel, ran rol doma ayin king. Agin no ran pridjen ba chepan tridjil, niran ruilok. Ayar odbe, kaneke, edari lo akurinamaya. Ken, kina amerikicin access ngan United States kap. Kajnaga, ichenariyana, epon. Eh, yu waywin meki, freedom of. Freedom of, eh, dan, mobility, niran ruilok, kammali chepro waywin gochakana. Eh, pune nej pajaraki jin gichi. Waywin yibadi kene no raan, eje, lamanak, eh, ninn, lamanak urani, bar dupe. Ken ruwijrin, no raan kan, eh, pridjor. Eh, ikran var ayrike, na wajedunari, yon eme chenaj pugun do employment. Apatudiri ngan armayjin majel. Eh, kein galu, Mr. Speaker, kanan, karrela varen bijalain, kaparino. Armayjin majel, eh, kumlej, iturwajlanian, ne waj, kumlej lu poser kamen, nijan. Nijar chino wala kiyi, lo, naalianme, lo, amadaka duwa bolbar. Iyal, chiron chisidu kana, ayin king, gichi. Eh, program leme, ejpar, nej kammanki, ne, yivad, Ms. Marshall Alice Bachan. Eh, kamman ruin madalakom, pajarake, no rege, dar, kar koferdu. Eh, kiin, nijar var, chino, kumlej lo poser kana, chiron ran, ilo, ayarit. Eh, todo ilo, chior kana, churencharan kana, ilo, amadaka duwa bolbar. Ej program le, an, eh, an, yubipajjengle, ne chino jan, pebore, eh, jan, janore. Rongojmyon ran, em, jamalakilu, eh, pebore lalim ran, eh, war chongran, eh, an, an, pajjengle kamman. Eh, ma, pugun, ninn, jen kene lu, eh, kaj jin kammale waywinin. Eh, we, chanan kadi kare waywinin, ichun waywinin, nej kammale, ngan ad, marungun. Eh, karrelo. Chiron rain, lo ayin king, eh, eh, ken opportunity gain, mehre, ri ma, nijayir. Ngan ayar, melile, ken, mantin majel, chaywor waywin gojit trainier, gichi, mantin majel, and opportunity go, ngan ayar marungun, inkejin. Chibang, community wayar kachoyu, ilo, gichi, health. Gichi, social, and economic, and environmental challenges. Ken, lilelige, we, waywin king. Eh, waywin gojit, mehre waywin kammali, enoch, ichun, chiron ro, kane, kobe yirmagi. Community wayar, pamali wayar, nan, iljun chagalak. Yon, waywin jin kammale, eh, karanan, melalakor, arzok. Rey babay pajjining chalakar kammale, ruin madalak, danan. Eh, madalajan, lemun tauj, yon armayjara, eh, marungun lo, ilo, mi choy, lo, mi biaw. Eh, we, kala, eh, alkar jangan, an, an, armayjin, pusirigin, dumudakig, gichi, waywinin, jin chikamali, jige. Kejangot, pune lo majelin, jikamali, ilo, worin buligin. Pugun, rey var kammali, lo guamun, saipan, a chep jangan, no, aryan kammali jin. Efesen, nijangan, ruchayin, ruchayin, kadi pugun, inkejia, ichronke. Rejerrejodongan, kejangam, kalimijak waywinin, jikamali, we, eno, rejerrejodongal, eh, lalengaran, marungun, bak. Dublikheiri ngan, yirmagi lo, ayin kana. Eh, chedgin waywin, elva, elga, namman, ngan, eh, promodi. Ajuk chiron, chiron rain, lo majelin, ngan ayar kantibipen dalim. Eh, menolami, o chalai, jin, armayjon, nej, paktaydulin, Ms. Marshall Alice, nijan var kantibipen. Dalgojir, ngan ayar paktaydalan, Ms. Pusirak, lo, yiran, yiran, eh, pridjor. Eh, we, chedgin waywin jin, jaywijin, chibang, chiron rain, nejir, lo ayin king. Eh, we, janganle, nijan chino, wala poser kana, ajrirana. Jikayir, ike, chuyin, eh, chibang ro, eh, no rege, rich panjirun, kamil wayar kachoyu. Aole, bayin, eh, ilan ayar, eh, nish. Eh, ngan, ngan, ngan programin, bo, yidla, no, chil waydin, go, rola, lo, doktorez, javi. Jikayir, ike, chuyin, eh, chibang ro, promodi chiron rain. Kertabar, kein ayar, kachoyu, ngan, yun malak, ayin king. Eh, parino, ngan, kammal milin, la, dalim, yurridom, kalimijak kejang. We, chen, marungun, var kangel tok armayjin, ngan ayar, lu gun tours. Eh, lu gun, doro, bayin king, chule, chen, waydin, lo, bayin king, lo, odial kana, lo, restaurant kana, lo, rental, lo, palu, waywin gojir. Eh, ilo, tu karu, unle, eh, Mr. Speaker, program le, an, yeyin, gichi, eh, Ms. Marshall Alice. Eh, menolab, al, lo, ranle, elgada, lo, pebore, manban, nej, ran, eh, crownie, eh, Ms. Marshall, eh, an, ayin king. Eh, we, yeyin, marung, eh, pugut, eh, lile, gojido, train, Mr. Speaker, come on.
Oh, Minister, nilan, pula, eh, rame, Minister, kagu, chiro, kagu. Eh, you ma malaw.
Malaw, Speaker. Eh, da, good morning, an, aole. Ikran, mo tana, baga, yar, du, duwe, gen, charvali, genar. Speaker, iko, wala, ilo, aole, ben, nan, or, raman, ngan. Kejbaro, manadjo, arwaj, antro, ninitan, ro, ngan, kau dejro, ubi, kau dej ubi, gen. Rayu dej, kau dej, kachoyu. Senator, Minister. Eh, malbada, kau dej, yuro, yuro, arim, arim, yuro, chicharvali. Speaker, eh, na jion, a, pune, nej, kap, karere, lo, kar, kene, no, go, war, chino, wala, gin, ne, men, alakojit. Igi chen, report go, an, ministeri, eh, em, ilo, chigigin, eh. Kechid, yan, charvali, gen, fraber, ilo, ekalin, foundation, wot, eja, prerilolo. Eh, na jion, pune, nej, kap, karere, lo, nan, go, yar, ku, go, ngan, nidi, chalain. Eh. Ilo, wayin, karu, wa, an, jion, kachidu, alban, aman. Eh, kachidu, go. Eh, muthan, kain, kachidu, kare, kabelak, kajan, we, armayjirin, chalain, nan. Malbak, amun, we, ed, berot, waywinin, ilo. Aran, eh, yon, ro, nam, kajalai, ro. Eh, midyo, ngai, den, karere, lo, gin. Eh, yar, eh, ne, ito, report, han, eh, MC. Speaker, eh, itama, ngan, yan, ito, reportin, ngan, ubijana, eh, kabino. Eh, tan, reportin, eh, cost benefit analysis for MC's, meram vessel. Eh, garab, teiri, lo, chongojin, or, ran, alingi. Eh. Eh, kain, yon, man, eh, eh, gar, tabartog, aole, senator, eh, minister. Eh, yo, man, charvali, o, kero, ilul, jaga, eh, na jion, minister, ilo, kha, ban, jion. Reporton, eh, mina, jaa, elai, diot, kachidu, kame, gen, wa, na, wa, na. Wa, khayal, man, har, kammal, lo, go, taujun, wongul, ilo, eh, chijet, tok, kav, man, na, reji. Eh. Eh, chigigilu, in tonai, jaa. Eh. MC, aboda, an, MC, kammal, nish, munchu, war. Eh, kammal, jion, ayar, bebebe. Kenge, eh, jillan, wot, pravlam, ilo, han, majelin. Eh, mina, ika, dan, eh, kumpani, ngan, kumpani, kumpani, nan, ken, MC. Na, eh, kumpani, go, rajle, dok, yalan, pogolak, khan, kana, ngan, eh, ni, kana, eh, oj, chaluj, eh, eh, bija. Eh, we, arwala, jion, incident, charge, magajin, pa, ngai, aygujin, pa, we, dure, lo, ekalin, min, gin. Eh, nje, perudilo, foundation, agen, wala, ken, man, eh, parwajin, yon, yon. Eh, wala, jion, incident, ke. Ngai, judge deliver fuel. Ani, jangan, eh, kene, way, mirai, ba. One third party vessel, operator. Eh, we. Te, te, in, wayan. Tejalai, oran, kalanin, fuelin. Eh, alak, rol, kajan, ikan, nar, kalin, jolo, fuel, ney. Eh, we, karanan, report, eh, we, eje, chungo, jubu, pasan, in, fuel, ad deliver. Menelain, eh, ar, war, eh, ar, war, be, eh, we, yon, eh, jangar, charvali, be, eh, par. Iyo, duk, just, kejin, we, ay, par, jwan, we. Chalak, cooperate, ipan, private sector, eh, kajabal, wa, na, reba, third party vessel. Eh, we, wala, kain, wayin, kumane, be, chirren, eh, we, wayin, be, ngar, be, ja. Eh, dal, jubu, taujun, kalan. Eh, we, eje, jubu, taujun, me, eh, tabar, ikan, eh, oros, be, changan, be, kame, lo, eh, or. Eh, changan, chenin, eh, bu, chijin, o, taujun, ana, account, ke, ya, chajdan, la, eh, wuni, ne, lak, a, ke. Be, fuel, na, eh, bu, kejabale, eh, eh, bu, mu, ya, ke. Eh, chigigigilu, no, arwala, ilo, tarin, ke, kejang, eh, ito, ngan, po, du. Eh, kiya, maramre, maramre, eh, kap, solution, be, eh, pajarak, kain, chigigigi. Eh, we, wa, na, alak, du, ijin. Chola, wayin, eme, gojtab, mu, ya, ke, aole, ben, fuelin, be, pugun, chon, eh, kajin, ke. Eh, kiya, alak, dan, eh, dal, eh, aptalo, var, abang, dal, ngan, wa, gan, ba, one, third party. Alak, wa, yang, na, ke, eh, we, ibru, rielong, eh, eh, dal, eh, kopan, tang, kilo, le, minister, ilo, han, wayan. Jion, eh, pravlam, kumangar, jaje, nan, ke, arwala, kejang, eh, tarin, ay, gin, nan, aga, rejwal, ilo, han, majelin, changan, no, dan, nan. Eh, changan, chen, eh, aram, magajin, saving, him, checking account, kana, an, MC. Ngan, we, ay, wa, na, eh, eh, jaa, ro, katar, jik, eh, ro, million. Eh, na, ilo, report, na. Two point four five million, ta, na, eh, me, karanan, par, analysis, na, an, so, ar, kammal, reportin, eh, bayla, no. Jion, chimatan, ye, eh, erol, dok, changan, chen. Anga, charge, be, wa, na, eh, we, ne, gar, don, ri, na, an, chavo, fuel, em, don, ri, na, an, MC, kala, eh, jion, point. Chimam, million. Ngan, wonan, eh, kada, ke, fuel, na. Eh, we, kar, wonan, gin, kar, ar, original, jan, ro, lalim, talak, jion, kalan, longan, chijin, o, lalim, chen. Eh, reportin, eh, ej, bir, bir, yon, changan, aman, gin. Eh, we. Chitgin, report, ngan, karere, lo. Eh, yon, ikran, bal, jangan, eh, alak, le, dok, bijain, minin, eh, bayla, ni, gin, chungun, chino, jan, yanna, wa, na, arid, akadok. Na, cha, value, un, wa, na, ne, nine point seven nine. Eh. Saving, yo, jan, no, dan, wa, na, ber, eh, ne, one point six million, ta, na. Eh, chetkana, information, a, jujim, dal, er, report, na. Eh, par, kup, eno, da, par, kupji. Ta, ngan, ran, ran, amman. Eh, jion, in, amman, lak, eh, jago, third party. Eh, jago, third party vessel, me, eh, kap, kijap, ah, deliver, jubu, pasan, in, fuel. Eh, kejang, eh, du, du, eh, eh, bu, chijin, o, taujun. Chen, fuel, ne, me, eh, perilo, han, tang, kana, wa, na, third party vessel, operate, dan, eh. Te, jaji, chen, tabar, eh. Eh, chij, kachay. Eh, jion, eh, wayin, eme, yar, kiya, aman, jani, chij, kiya. Perilo, al, lege, ke, epon, chavo, kopan, wa, na. Eh, ban, eh, ban, var, chavo, fuel, kana, chij, li, vajin, kana, eh, ni, kana. Eh, me, ban, var, lu, ja, MC, gichi, waywin, chabna. Pugun, ne, rajla, changan, fuelin, eh, rujala, ba, wayan, eh, eh, chong, eh, elang, geji. Eh, me, jala, yan, gojberi, eh, jala, arin, enet. Eh, rajla, alu, dilan, computer, eh, lo, ngan, gojberi, arin, javar, rajilo, eh, wayan, rajilo. Jion, an, way, dojak, okumal, bangai, ilo, keli, aja, gojberi, yar, in, chabwar. Speaker, eh, we, jion, in, report, eh, gichi, eh, charvali, me, jital, ngan, jion, minister. Eh, kejang, ilo, kabin, eh, langan, eh, kolektive responsible, eh, eno, dan, minister, eh, marung, kene, no, kompat, wat, ched, er, ya, eh, chep. Eje, plukun, ayar, eh, ra, ilo, mol, eh, me, chimor, eh, chit, lo, eh, no, me, chibang, ro. Eh, me, ngai, nan. Kar, pa, eh, 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 im, marung, kar, var, kene, no, eh, cha, bjeragisi. Ijo, ikran, kage, mimik, nidi, chalain, eh, eh. Jar, pan, nan, eh, policy, normal. Policy, normal, eh, eh, ngan, eh, eh, ngan, ilo, lon, eh, nijan, rilang, nidi, chalain, eh. Kayuta, par, jion, trust fund, ngan, adaptation. Eh, we, chino, un, eh, ngai, ngai, kalimjak, la, be, eh, tria, kama, la, jen, ke. Policy, normal, eh, pugun, ne, nechek, kene, ngan, trust fund, ro, du. Armay, man, eh, pokaj, na, an, eh, trust fund, eh, eji, o, galak. Armay, eje, kap, kav, man, eh, nijan, be, chino, kene, no, ilo, la, uli, ke, ngai, nan, be. Nechep, be, kammal, muri, program, javun, eh, ngan, law, war. Eh, we, armay, man, eh, chit, focus, on. Pujin, kene, por, eh, no, paj, ngan, entay, daman, go, ayar. Igi chen, adaptation. Chavran, yaa, rajdal, ngan, eh, a, rajan, thay, dal, ngan. Ngan, eh, adaptation, benefit, go. Chinchep, bank, kon, peru, di majel, be, kon, peru, ilo, han, program, eh, ngai, tamak, para, pramajeran, matay, lo, amerikan, ra, ram, magit. Rajan, thay, dal, ngan, benefit, go, lal, ayar, eh, khal, ki. Eh, kelen, khal, kopan, eh, policy, oh, me, eh, lo, man, armay. Eh, ito, go, eh, yon, eh, ngai, ne, par, pokon, a, ki. Inek, go, wala, be, minister, eh, me, luku, yuro, jaga, be. Chang, eh, ba, eh, we, er, han, minister, javi, eh, eh, epon, mangi, ke, ke. Eh, epon, minister, han, arin, ti, ik, kene, ipan, eh, we, chen, eh, chibang, we, elak, er, hin, nijan, pungut, ayar. Chepan, ba, eh, we, we, eh, elang, aman, vais, or, a, chay, we, go, va, du, du, mi, be, chen, par, chalain, na. We, na, bjeragisin, Speaker, come on, kane, eh.
Malaga, jin, cabinet, lo, chupunin. Ngan, eh, ala, or, anu, jion, eh, o, itel, kejang, la, nidi, chalain, eh, Speaker. Eh, nan, pugun, pukir, clarify, jin, jan, projecten. Statement, eh, ki, chupung, eh, ya, rongjaga, je, kani, kon, arongjaga, ilo, a, chij, chij. Ken, melalai, ne, ke, eh, kejang, eh, tarin, ay, la, eh, tarin, eh, ro, lo, han, min. Eh, eh, be, jij, we, charvali, pen, ro. Eh, jion, eh, tel, chay, ne, ikran, pugut, pugut, clarify, jin, chen, epen, Mr. Projecten. Nijang, wala, statement, nijado, eh, nan, var, wala, kala, nijado. Eh, wan, alikar, eh, alikar, er, we, nar, we, chen, ro. Charvali, han, Speaker, Vice Speaker, nidi, chalain, member, ro, kammal, kage. Bil, um, resolution. Malang, kage, no, member, eh, dar, introdujin, nijar, page. Eh, we, bak, kage, no, han, kachidu, chibang, ngan, armayjirlo, karyen, kada, lo, ko, be, deo. Pa, jid, deo. Eh, kage, no, jat. Eh. Ilo, arigal, lalim, nijamin, an, armayjin, alikin, alban, alikar, tairan, projecten, kap, cabinet, execute. Lo, lo, jaga, chicken, chugul, chicken, eh, jumur, transportation, eh, ma, olip, min, gen, we, domjich. Eh, alikin, nidi, chalain, go, epen, kage, ne, gin. Gen, min, ral, eh, de, puk, chigir, eh, we, yang, rol, dogan, nidi, chalain, eh, no, we, eh, or, ijo, nidi, chalain, lika, je, bak, a. Eh, we, nijan, nidi, chalak, kammal, er, we, wan, page, kage, no. Eh, pugun, eh, war, alikalok, ta, melalai, nan, nijan, charvali, pen, ro, eh, ngai, ngai, ila, jala, kejaj, tari, na, ro. Nidi, chalai, kajidugun, cabinet, do, we, er, we, wanin. Eh, ilal, ilal, arigal, lalim, er, we, han, cabinet, ma, ta, da, responsible, ngan, nidi, chalai. Eh, me, er, we, han, nidi, chalai. Eh, kajidugun, cabinet, do, eh, we, er, we, nan, eh, chaptari, na, minin. Eh, be, yung, nijamin, eh, eh, we, eh, bu, puk, chigun. Lo, ta, da, alang, eh, len, charvali, je, or, je, boman. Eh, me, armayjro, char, eh, ral, lika, kajin, rajaban, no, dogan, ke. Eh, we, minin, je, bodo, ke, jion, tarin, ay. Eh, charvali, pen, ro, pugun, kejang, jid, yang, resolution, and page, ro, char, chid, eh, alikin, eh, elang, ke, chij, chen, lo, resolution, we, ay, la, nidi, chalain. Ar, jen, page, ro, na, ngan, chamal, o, ki, ya, charvali, eh, tum, charvali, eh, chij, chen, lo, resolution, or, eh, bu, rectify, or, er, man, page, ro. Jar, kachidu, kage, la, kala, we, na, ngan, chamal, eh, tum, eh, chang, eh, chay, deo. That's, I believe, that's a, even a constitutional issue. Eh, we, eh, kana, eh, gan. Eh. Charvali, pen, ro, eh, tamak, eh, nan, eh, 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 bu, puk, chigun. Eh, eh, goes both way. Kiya. Eh, a, chij, yang, eh, la, dan, go, Mr. Projecten, jion, la, dan, kajidu, kajaron, cha, exempt, eh, ta, eh, ko, han, armayj, or, in, marung, chibang, ilo, ko, be, deo. Ko, va, chibang, le, lo, chibang, kana, here. Ngan, taini, nijan, lo, reply, la, tain. Jan, ubijana, eh. Jid, yang, member, ran, nidi, chalal, ar, kachidu, eh, par, chij, je, la, tain, chang, we, lang, reply, ngan, la, tain, ay. Pugun, kejang, tifai, ne, nan, nijan, charvali, pen, ro. Eh, jion, Speaker, eh, eh, bader, ila, ro, nan, kejang, eh, chep, charvali, pen, ro, eh, kajaj, tarin, ay, ro. Eh, eh, pugun, eh, chep, eh, chep, jion, mila, bijim, we. Eh. Meno, eh, ilu, ta, da, charvali, han, CNC, kame, eh, kaburo, ro, tain, no, talok, collective responsible, de, minister, jion, eh, talim, say, ne, mino, kame, eh, jangan, kar, regali. Eh, pugun, kejang, eh, var, tifai, ne, nan, nijan, charvali, pen, ro, eh, na, alikar. Eh, we, kame, nidi, chalain, nijang, eh, kammal, er, we, wan, page, legislation. Eh, charvali, han, executive branch, projecten, kap, cabinet, ro, execute, the legislation, eh, nijan, nidi, chalai, page. Eh, we, nijang, eh, kammal, er, we, wan. Eh, par, er, we, wan, nidi, chalai, eh, to, kajidugun, cabinet, do, kajan, charvali, ho, han. Eje, tamak, eh, tarin, ay, eh, chij, kachiduk. Eh, lo, ta, da, un, nan, de, jali, je, char, hu, wa. Eh, we, eh, kana, eh, register, minin, lo, nidi, Speaker, we, eh, ray, nijan, olo. Eje, tamak, eh, bim, we, han, ray, jion, eh, dok, kajion, pa, ke. Ray, nidi, chalai, je, kammal, charvali, wan, we. Eh, marung, pugun, alikalok, eh, ubijaro, projecten, eh, kumano, var, kumano, ta, melalai, nan, in, eh, ilari, han, tarin, ay, ro. Eh, na, alikar, eh, pugun, eh, or, chidu, ju, ilikija, bijajin, nidi, lalai, ne, kap. Var, kala, alikalok, luku, melalai, nan, nijan, charvali, pen, ro. Kajidu, wan, eh, nidi, Senator, of Speaker. Come on. Chij, bela, eh, dam, ne, bachi, jin, o, gi, gichi, eh, kachidu, go, wa. Eh, ido, du, wa, gan, kajidu, go, eh, eh, no, ro, jaga. Eh, kar, kana, eh, we, register, eh. Kajon, an, chia, we, eh, belo, rego. Eh, senador, way, ilo, chikra, eh, we, belo, la, jagan, kajidu, go, wa, jion, ma, la.
Come on, come on, Speaker. Nan, eh, da, bijot, a, un, kau, dej, in, ar, ngan, ro, ne. Eh, kajidu, kar, nijto, gichi, chen, na, eh, no, follow up. Budaj, na, eh, on, ma, lo, gin, an. Par, jion, an, kammol, la, ne, gen, muri, me, jumur. Eh, wan, kajpar, eh, on, ah, eh, armayjir, in, an, ki, al, da, ken, in, an. Kli, yiro, yero, war, ayin, king, kli, eh, Mr. Speaker, Vice Speaker, projectin, in, ar, o, jum, cabinet, in. Rugal, eh, rain, chen, kachoyu, ayin, king, aole, bay, armayjin, majel. Juna, kli, ngan, yiro, yero, war, armayjir, o, chij, chid, lo, da, ay. Speaker, eh, ikar, magal, dakar, kajidu, ki, na, gar, uig, olak, gichi, eh, al, gar, jepri, ilo. Poni, ayin, yo, mi, gin, an. Le, lo, eh, jion, kammol, eh, ngan, eh, ken, eh, leader, she, be, han, ke, bi, eh, no, de, ra, cha, ta, eh, ich, jion, wa, eh, eh, air, tulip, ral, eh, fuel, eh, ngan, kli. Eh, me, gin, an, par, kammol, eh, tubo, la, ilo, air. Perilo, wayin, eh, kar, ilo, lo, an, u, uig, ngan, ay, karere, lo, charvali. Gin, an, kammol, eh, par, jion, an, ken, in, kij, chibang, ken, air, par, eh, no, chipping. Mi, kar, rongjaga, eh, statement, go, han, projecten, eh, minister, in, an, finance, gichi, chen, waywin, ar, pugut, solution, go, ngan. Kammal, eh, armayjirin, je, prujalak, eh, migrate, chen, majelin. Jil, eh, eh, chid, ay, eh, eh. Jil, eh, eh, we, han, bin, muri, kap, puk, charval. Eh, lang, ro, me, ngai, par, chibang, here, kap, puk, kap, puk, eh, charval, eh. Eh, bu, yen, jil, eh, pugun, jion, ay, eh, system, in, me, tij, muri, ga, ilo, PSC. Eh, marung, puk, jion, lo, ngan, ro, chidu, al, dang, ngan, ay, kap, puk, charval. Jil, eh, eh, bin, ay, eh, 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 bin, ay, charval, eh, ilan, ay, pamali, ilan, ay, ay, guj. Right, pugut, kelen, eh, jol, jala, kajan, majelin, eh, jil, eh, no, dan, projectin, ba, gich, solution, eh, be, di, peridjagam, ken, in, ar, o, charvali, pen, ro. Jigar, rongjaga, eh, jin, projectin, in, eh, eh, ar, jan, charvali, pen, ro, eh, pugut, wayin, me, jalan, abang, ke, me, di, yon, eh, eh, ta, da, armayjir, in, ar. Ilo, ay, jol, jala, kamp, puk. Eh. Eh, ne, mala, chukun, muri, jil, eh, eh, o, da, ay, eh, eh, al, bay, char, aman, we, eh, al, bal, eh, wun, eh, way, ni, kiya, eh, krim, eh, jok, kiya, armayjir, ah, lukun. Char, aman. Eh, kammol, eh, par, jion, an, eh, green, marriage, begat, ro. Le, lo, chen, ngan, armayjir, in, ar. Eh, we, ma, chiu. Jar, den, kala, gin, in, eh, kar, den, pugut, chiduk, nan, kammol, eh, chen, armayjir, o, eh, chij, chid, lo, da, ay. Come on, Speaker.
Malaw, eh, Senator. Eh, or. Wu, ah, jin, cabinet, ngan. Kachidu, go, ki, jin, namri, ro, dan, armayjin, namri, kap, armayjin, ayin, king. Senator, Tony, eh, ja, privilege.
Come on, Speaker, par, jion, an, kli, em, kau, dej, aole, kammol, eh, la, ne, jijim, un, chen, mino, du, mji. Mr. Speaker, pul, yaa, eh, eh, kumarong, jijim, eh, ke, ku, ye, kiya. Eh, na, ilo, ran, eh, ilu, you, be, ngai, jala, man, nan, na, eh, me, ilo, ran, eh, ilu, come on, eh.
Ilu, jion, eh, jito, kejor, eh, ilalai, eh, excuse, kiya. Nani, chalak, la, ite, je, polipen, cabinet, ngan, kajidu, go, eh, kajalak, eh, we, jala, jangan, eh, ka, Minister, namram, eh, kajidu, go, am.
Speaker, come on, eh, kene, du, gin, kammol, eh, la, di, mo, tada. Leg, nan, kli, em, kau, dej, go, arang, ro, yuro, yero, al, yuro, yuro, chiner, on, ro. Par, eh, no, drak, yuro, chen, eh, kap, green, drak, yuro, di, da, eh, kua, tak, ay, ne, gin, kaj, ar, way. You will not give me any information about the government. Speaker Kerry. Vice Speaker Chief Vice President David Kabua. Member in the cabinet, you will not give me any information about the government. In special claim, I will not give you any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. Speaker, I will not give you any information about the government. And you will not give me any information about the government. And you will not give me any information about the government. I know that you are here. I know that you are here. You will not give me any information about the government. I know that you are here. Speaker, I will not give you any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. I will not give you any information about the government. I know that you are here, Mr. Speaker. If you don't give me any information about the government, I will not give you any information about the government. And you will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. And you will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. Incomplete. You will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. And I know that you are here. You will not give me any information about the government. I know that you are here. You will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. And I know that you are here. You will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. I will not give you any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. Speaker, I know that you are here. I know that you are here, Minister Chief. I will not give you any information about the government. I am very tired. I will not give you any information about the government. I know that you will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the high school. I will not give you any information about the government. I know that you are here. I will not give you any information about the government. I know that you are here. I know that you are here. I will not give you any information about the government. And I know that you are here. You will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. I know that you are here. You will not give me any information about the government. And I know that you will not give me any information about the government. And I know that you are here. And I know that you are here. I know that you are here. I know that you are here. You will not give me any information about the government. Third-party supplier. Speaker. I will not give you any information about the government. It will be written down. You will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the CPU. You will not give me any information about the renewable energy sector. And I know that you will not give me any information about the spurs. You will not give me any information about the government. I know that you will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the programming. I know that you will not give me any information about the programming. ACPEU, then it will be written down. You will not give me any information about the renewable energy. And I will not give you any information about the government. It will be written down. Speaker, I know that you will not give me any information about the government.
Speaker. I know that you are here, Minister. Sir. Do you want to talk?
Speaker. I will not give you any information about the government. Speaker, you will not give me any information about the government. Senator Wesley, you will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. And I will not give you any information about the government. I will not give you any information about the government. It will be written down. You will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any complete information about the government. I know that you will not give me any information about the government. Because Minister Loa, he is here. And he will not give you any information about the government. He will not give you any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the CPU. Project. I will not give you any information about the government. Minister. Minister. I know that you will not give me any information about the government. Minister. I know that you will not give me any information about the government. You will not give me any information about the government. Hopefully, you will not give me any information about the government. I know that you will not give me any information about the government.
Speaker. Minister. I know that you will not give me any information about the government. Senator Billyman. And you will not give me any information about the government. And I will not give you any information about the government. And I know that you are here. I know that you are here. I know that you are here. Please freeze the clock for the time being. I would like to give you the privilege of chairing Senator Tony Miller. I know that you are here.
Speaker. I know that you are here. You will not give me any information about the government. I will not give you any information about the train. You will not give me any information about the baby. Senator. I know that you will not give me any information about the train. You will not give me any information about the Micro Games Council. I know that you will not give me any information about the President and Minister. I want to talk. Clear the question, General Gabeer. Speaker. General Palau. Frank Kyoto. General Saipan. Valeria. Hops Snyder. I hope I did not butcher that. That's right. You will not give me any information about the government. General Guam. Anita. Blas. Joe Miranda. Joe, Executive General of Micro Games Council. General Chuk. Anthony Bouale. Pompey. Arwelo Joap. Ramsey Joap. Kusray. Aloka Sigra. Kilbat. Tebana. Tebana Nemani. I hope I'm not butchering all these surnames. Kirbas as well. Rota. Onorio. Nowru. Gay Lee Jen Wera. Imber Nowru. Alvin Harris. You will not give me any information about the Speaker. General Chongul. You will not give me any information about the Speaker. You will not give me any information about the Speaker. And I know that you will not give me any information about the Speaker. Please rise and be recognized.
Please, please rise.
Please rise and be recognized. Thank you. Have a seat. I know that you are here. Speaker, I know that you are here. 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 You will not give me any information. I know that you will not give me any information. I know that you are here. Speaker. I know that you are here. 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 You will not give me any information about the Speaker.
I know that you are here.
Okay. I will be there.
I will not give you any information about the Speaker.
Speaker. I know that you are here. I know that you are here. I know that you are here. Alfred Junior. Momotaro. Nazon. Billyman. Alfredi. Caneko. Tomorrow's list. Here, Senator Paul. Coloper. Senator. Senator, I know that you are here. 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 We... We... Succession personnel. It's not a motion yet. We're still up in the air. You will not give me any information about the Speaker.
Ijelaake, kagej chirik.
Ijiru, jepalak tok giya, Mr Sock.
Speaker, ilo kaudet, jemkan, kal mallawijin, ecajwijpar, kaudet, programne, jen kambankiya, jen, nabujan digijalain. Ijilawal, majeline, kamali jana beb, ben digijalan, kagej may ranilyu, jolaw.
Lanjengan, jon motion iligio, em, jia jen entertainim, jena ini geno, we, kala, chablak. Abay, mohtayan, mohtayanan, nadejala, entertainim, motion, orak, cabrot, kajjala jen chairman ro. Aijalaj, kajjala jen chairman ro, inamawor jon motion giya, ben nadejala ngan kagej may ranilyu, roenel lamro, ranjuyin bait. Conchap. Roenel lamro, nadejala ngan kagej may ranilyu, ranjuyin bait. Ejconchap. Inam, nadejala chap kagej, kajangwijam, komane ceremony, nabujam, par chablak tok. Ijelaake, kagej chirikri.